I call the January eighth. Twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting to order at six P M. Can I get a roll call?
Chair Andrew Carr.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Lon Hyberline.
Here.
Matt Constantine. Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova. Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Carr, before we move on to.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on to citizen input. Normally, at the first meeting of the year is when we do the nominations for chair and vice chair. It is not on the agenda tonight, bit of an oversight. So we really have two options. The first option would be for the commission to amend the agenda to add it to the end of the meeting, or we can just put it on the agenda for the February meeting. So I don't know if the commission has a preference one way or the other.
February meeting, doesn't matter.
February meeting's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we will put that on for the February meeting then.
Perfect.
Assuming it's okay for the person doing the work.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you're all right. It's not really work, it's just reading. So this is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing. This includes the opportunity to address any items scheduled for a work session. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any matter, other matter of concern, including any work session item, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat feature function that we may hear from you now. If you have not already, please fill out a testimony card and give it to the clerk. Also, please state your name and address for the record or state that your address is as provided on the testimony card.
I don't have any attendees on.
I don't see any either, so we will continue on. There were no minutes included, so we will not do the minutes. Next on the agenda is a work session for Climate Action Plan. This work session is a chance for the Planning Commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. At this time, I call for city staff to present information they have prepared for the work session. Will city staff please present?
Yes, good evening, Chair, members of the commission. My name's Kerry Rappel, the city's National Resources Manager. And I'll just try to get this started here. Is it Chair? I don't know if I got it. Thanks, Bindi. All right. So with me tonight also remotely are two of the consultants working on the project, Hillary Beatty and Maria Braun. And so they will be helping me with the presentation. So we'll walk you through tonight progress that we've made so far with working on the plan, give you some background in terms of the items that they've been able to complete at this point, and then also talk about some of the information that we'd like feedback from the Planning Commission about. So like I said, we'll give you a little bit of an overview here. Hillary and Maria, then we'll get into the greenhouse gas inventory, where we looked at the city's energy consumption as well as within the community and the emissions associated with that. So there was some modeling work that was done, actually a pretty extensive model. And then we'll talk about the business as usual and business as planned scenarios. So that's kind of looking at what we do currently and what we could do in the future. And some of that's certainly based on the state initiatives, one that you'll hear tonight from Dan Pauli about parking reform. So those all inform the process in terms of what we develop. And then we'll get into some of these draft low-carbon actions that will form the basis for what we call the low-carbon scenario. So there'll be another modeling exercise that will come with that in terms of once we decide what actions would be in the best interest of the community. So the consultant team, they're with SSG and they're a company that's really based in Canada. So Maria, who's with me tonight, she's doing remotely from Nova Scotia. So currently, it's after ten there for her. So that's why I wanted this to be the first item on the agenda. And so, yeah, they have a lot of experience, over twenty years as far as their business, and they've done a lot of different climate action plans throughout North America. One of the plans that they worked on was the Clackamas County's plan, which was developed but never adopted. So we were following some of the aspects of that plan, but we're certainly building our own plan in terms of Wilsonville. So, yeah, the plan itself is driven at the policy level. That informs ultimately the actions that we'll be taking in terms of what we want to implement with the plan. And it's based on a lot of this technical analysis in terms of energy use and emissions associated with that energy use. So you try to balance in terms of those actions, how can you affect those emissions, whether at the city level in terms of what the city actually controls or within the community itself. Important to this, and they'll get into this a little bit more, is, am I not getting picked up here? Sorry. The context for what we're doing. So they'll talk a little bit about some of the documents that they've looked at to this point, which include the Comprehensive Plan, Transportation Systems Plan, and a number of other ones that really form the basis is trying to understand currently what Wilsonville's doing, what aspirations they have for the future in terms of what we want to see within this community. And then they'll get into the energy and emissions work that they've done. They'll show you a bunch of graphs and other things, some of that you've seen within your packet. And then we'll talk a little bit about the engagement. If you noticed, but there's a sign outside for the open house that will be held next Thursday. And then the policies and actions, those low-carbon actions that we'll want to discuss with you. So this just gives you an idea of sort of the framework when we're looking at climate action planning, takes into account a lot of different things in terms of what we do within a society. And so it's many of the things that you talk about pretty regularly in terms of your commission. And so we try to take that all into account in terms of what we're modeling, what we're looking at as potential actions. So you've probably heard about this, some of the state initiatives, the executive order that is looking at reducing statewide emissions by twenty thirty-five, forty-five percent, and then ultimately by twenty fifty, eighty percent reduction in those overall emissions. So they're pretty ambitious goals in terms of what the state would like to see us achieve. And that's certainly reflected in the other item you're going to be talking about tonight in terms of how that process is moving forward. So like I said, there's the parking reform, but there's also some other aspects that we'll be looking at in the future as far as EV-ready parking and land use and transportation planning and climate-friendly areas. So this will all get ultimately reflected in a lot of the planning projects that will come before you also. And then, like I said, there's these existing plans that we used as the basis for the context. One of the more important ones we just recently adopted back in twenty twenty-one is the Urban Forest Management Plan. It has a goal of increasing our canopy by six percent over the next twenty-five years. So certainly, as far as sequestering carbon, it's an important resource in terms of what we have here in the community, but it's also important in many other ways. And then the Transportation System Plan, like I mentioned, and Comp Plan. SMART has their own climate action plan, which will be incorporating those elements into this plan. And then the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. So this just gives you an idea of a timeline where we're at within the process. So basically, we've completed the first two circles that you see there on the left-hand side. And we're in the process of trying to define or come up with these actions that will guide the process. And then ultimately, we'll take that through another scenario in terms of those low-carbon actions. And then ultimately, we'll have draft and final plans that the commission will be reviewing. So like I said, we're doing some engagement at this point in terms of not only reaching out to the public with the open house next Thursday, but we've tried to focus in on businesses and industries within the community too. And so I have a wonderful volunteer from the community that's helping me with this. And we're reaching out to fifty businesses. And we're going to have Industry Forum next Thursday also at noon. And there's also now another survey that's posted on the Let's Talk site that's specific to business and industries. And so we hope to get their input and see how the city might be of assistance in terms of what they're looking to do in the future. And this was the public survey that we did that closed at the end of November. So the columns in red are, we did a survey as part of the Clackamas County Plan, so that was done a number of years ago. So it gives you an idea, just a little bit of comparison. So you can see just in about a three- to four-year period that at one point, seventy-six percent of the residents that took the survey within Wilsonville thought it was either important or very important in terms of climate change. And now it's up to eighty-eight percent. So we look at that as positive in terms of what people expect to see within their community. So I'm going to turn it over to Hillary at this point, and she'll walk you through the greenhouse gas inventory.
Great, thank you very much, Kerry. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this first slide, so as part of the project, we completed an inventory of Wilsonville's energy use and greenhouse gas emissions for twenty twenty-one. This first slide shows energy consumption by sector in twenty twenty-one. So you'll see transportation accounts for nearly half or forty-eight percent of the city's energy consumption. This is mostly from the use of diesel and gasoline and personal and commercial vehicles. Commercial buildings account for twenty-two percent of energy use, while residential buildings account for another eighteen percent. And natural gas and electricity are the two biggest sources of energy used in buildings. Finally, industry is responsible for the remaining twelve percent of energy use in the city. And the biggest energy sources used by industry are electricity, fuel oil, propane, and natural gas. Next slide, please. So this slide shows greenhouse gas emissions by sector. So you'll see the emissions associated with each sector are similar to the energy consumption by sector, but there are small differences. Transportation is responsible for forty-six percent of greenhouse gas emissions. Commercial buildings account for twenty-four percent of greenhouse gas emissions, while residential buildings account for another fifteen percent. And industry is responsible for fourteen percent of the greenhouse gas emissions in the city. Finally, one percent of the city's emissions are associated with solid waste, and these emissions are primarily from the decomposition of organic waste in landfills. Next slide. So in addition to developing an inventory, we also developed two future energy and emission scenarios for the city like Kerry mentioned. These are called the Business As Usual, or BAU, and Business As Planned, or BAP scenarios. Next slide, please. The Business As Usual scenario involves projecting future energy use and emissions. If only changes are population and economic growth, vehicle fuel efficiency standards, and climate warming. In this scenario, all other conditions remain the same. The Business As Planned scenario builds on the BAU by adding the impact of approved and funded climate policies. So an example of this is the statewide Clean Cars Two requirement that all new light-duty vehicles are zero emissions beginning in twenty thirty-five. Finally, the low-carbon scenario builds on the BAP by adding measures that would help the city achieve their climate goals. We have not completed this model yet as we wanted to collect feedback about potential low-carbon actions first. So today, we're only reviewing the BAU and BAP modeling results. So these are the stable assumptions for the BAU, Business As Usual scenario. As you see, we assume the population will increase by fourteen percent between twenty nineteen and twenty thirty-nine as per the city's twenty nineteen Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. We also assume that employment will increase as population increases and that new buildings will be constructed to support this growth. Finally, we assume that climate warming will increase. So this will reduce heating requirements in the winter but also increase cooling requirements in the summer. Next slide, please. This figure shows the projected greenhouse gas emissions by sector under the Business As Usual scenario. So in this scenario, the community emissions increased by nineteen percent from approximately two hundred and ninety-two thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalent into two thousand and twenty-one to three hundred and forty-seven thousand tons in twenty fifty. This includes a fifty percent increase in commercial and residential emissions, which reflects the projected employment growth rate. You can see that sequestration is included in this figure as well at the top, and this includes carbon dioxide reductions from the city's current tree canopy. Next slide. So as noted, the Business As Planned scenario adds the impact of approved and funded climate policies on future energy and emissions. This slide highlights the notable assumptions included in the BAP scenario. The first is the statewide clean car standards. So by twenty thirty-five, all newly purchased passenger cars, SUVs, and light-duty pickup trucks must either be battery-electric or plug-in hybrid electric vehicles. The second is the statewide clean truck rules, which require an increasing percentage of new medium and heavy-duty vehicles to be zero-emission vehicles beginning in twenty twenty-five. The third is new statewide building codes, which result in improvements to residential building codes. And we assume that will happen every five years or so based on historical trends. And finally, we assume that Wilsonville tree canopy increases from thirty to thirty-six percent by twenty forty-six based on the city's urban forest management plan that Kerry had mentioned. Next slide, please. So this figure shows the projected greenhouse gas emissions by sector under the BAP scenario. So in this scenario, the community emissions increase by one percent between twenty twenty-one and twenty fifty. This is a smaller increase than the nineteen percent increase in the BAU scenario. So at this point, I will pass it on to my colleague, Maria.
Thank you very much. And so now we want to, having given you that baseline of what the future might hold in terms of energy use and emissions into two sort of standard expected scenarios, possible scenarios, we want to show you some of the ideas that we have for what a low-carbon future would require. So if you need to take these emission reductions and energy use reductions further, what kinds of steps do you have to take? Next slide, please. So as we model this information for you, rather than seeing graphs like the ones that Hillary just showed you, you're going to start seeing graphs that have wedges in them that look more like this one. And each of these wedges will represent a change that, a particular modeled action or a set of actions that relates to a particular sector. So we'll have some actions that are specific to new buildings, new building construction, other actions that relate to the conversion of vehicles to zero-emission vehicles, and so on. And you'll start seeing that these wedges take the place of the emissions that were shown in the other two scenarios and drop your overall emissions down towards the twenty fifty goal. So that's how the results will come to you after we've completed this modeling. Next slide, please. So we want to draw a distinction here as well that's important to understand. We talk about low-carbon actions, and these are actions that are quantified and described in very specific numeric terms, and they can be assigned to a timeline. So an example of this is something like what's shown on the graph here. So you may have a goal citywide to shift vehicle traffic from its current proportion of trips, which might be something like fifty percent. I don't remember the exact numbers for Wilsonville right now. And you may choose to try and shift a portion of that, like ten percent to transit and maybe five percent to active transportation by a particular year in the future. And that's a fairly common thing for active transportation plans and future city plans to include in their own planning. So we take things like that, and we can actually integrate that into the modeling. And that's what we call an action, something that can be laid out very numerically like that. Next slide. Or did I, do we talk about implementation measures here too? I'm sorry, can you back up one slide? Is that possible? Thank you. Implementation measures, on the other hand, are the actions that you can take from a policy perspective or from an incentive perspective or a regulatory perspective in some cases to actually try and make that change occur. So there, we're talking about things like possibly lowering transit fares or building additional infrastructure to make sure that people feel safe when they're taking active transportation trips rather than driving in a car. So one is facilitating, and that's the implementation measures. And the action itself is what we model. So that's just a distinction that we draw that helps us when we gather your feedback to know whether we should be adjusting actions to reflect the things that you're telling us are important or whether your feedback relates to how you may accomplish these changes. Next slide, please. So this slide shows you some examples of implementation measures that may be used to achieve something like the mode shift that we described above. And there are a whole host of them. And every action that we talk about will have a variety of ways of reaching the goals. And that can often become the more controversial or more substantive part of discussions when you do this planning, is how do we actually get there? So rather than the goal itself becoming the main topic of conversation, it's how do we best support our community to achieve these goals or to move in this direction? Next slide, please. So this displays some of the draft low-carbon actions that we're considering modeling for you, and we're very interested in getting your feedback on these and in hearing any questions you may have specifically about these. We've color-coded them by sector, so the planning and building actions are shown here in green. And these changes are required, the ones that are shown here, to reduce the community's overall energy consumption to heat and cool buildings and also to reduce the need for commuting. So when you build a community to be a denser community and you implement changes to buildings so that they become more energy efficient, you also experience savings in the energy costs, the amount of energy used, the comfort levels of the buildings, and you shorten the trips from work to home and back again because you're building more compact communities. So those three actions kind of work in conjunction with each other to ensure that you're using less energy, both in how you treat the buildings and how you keep them habitable and comfortable and healthy, but also in terms of how people get from one building to the other. So they're cooperative, those three planning and building-associated actions. The three actions on the bottom, two of them are in blue, and those relate to transportation. And the pink one is a specific action we're considering relating to industrial activities in the city. The two blue ones work in cooperation as well. Sometimes people wonder if we can achieve the climate shifts that we need to achieve or the energy transitions we need to achieve simply by electrifying all our vehicles. And theoretically, that is possible, but the problem with that would be that we would probably overextend our electricity grids if we did that without also reducing the amount of trips that we would take in vehicles. So there's a need, similar to what there is in buildings, to both become more efficient with our energy use and then to switch the energy sources that we use for those purposes. So in buildings, we make them more energy efficient, and then we switch out the heating and cooling systems. In transportation, we take more shared trips, which are transit trips or commute car-share trips. We also switch more trips to active transportation if we can, encourage that. And then we take the remaining trips and we decarbonize the vehicles in which those trips are being taken. The industrial action is quite broadly worded, and that's really because industry has many, different industries need to decarbonize in different ways. So steel manufacturing is very different than, for example, woodworking manufacturing opportunity, something like that. So the ways in which we're actually going to achieve a twenty percent reduction in industrial energy use is going to be quite unique to each of those industries. Next slide, please. Okay, on this one, we're talking primarily about energy use and about waste. So the two orange blocks at the top relate to renewable energy. So this is what I was describing in the previous slide as switching the underlying energy sources. So here, we are switching people primarily to electricity. So away from all of our fossil fuels, including natural gas, gasoline, diesel, that's what we're shifting away from, and we're shifting to electricity. That electricity needs to come from renewable sources. And the more local those sources are, the more resilient your community is. So we're going to suggest and model actions that would increase the amount of solar that is on new buildings by twenty fifty. And we're also going to consider options like procuring carbon-free electricity, so actually having the ability to purchase specifically green electricity for communities, for businesses, and residential owners. The yellow squares relate to actions pertaining to waste. And there are, again, many possible actions that can be taken here and can be modeled. Overall, waste diversion from landfill is a good action to have that gives you lots of ways underneath that that you can actually achieve it. But it can also be measured and quantified so that you can track whether you're achieving it. The second one that we have there is the production of renewable natural gas. And that is a really positive opportunity that we always encourage our clients to take, to look at their wastewater treatment facilities and see whether they can install anaerobic digesters that will allow them to create renewable natural gas and sell that either to industry or into the grid and provide revenue to the city for a facility that traditionally is actually quite cost-intensive. So we'll model that out for you as well. The bottom two gray squares are also related to renewable energy, but those are specific to the state regulations. So we are hoping very much that the state achieves that, manages to achieve the greening of the grid to support that transition. But we're also doing some work in the background to show you what the impact would be if those goals are not met so that you still have an impression of what the remaining work would be. Next slide. And I will hand it back to Kerry here.
Well, thank you. So, yeah, we can bring up both of those slides again if you have specific input or questions, but we'd also like to solicit any ideas also that you might have for other potential actions or if you want to discuss potential implementation measures or something related to the actions themselves. So like I said, once again, we're here to answer any questions you have about what we presented. Certainly, the actions we've shown you, we'll have to go through a review process with staff also, and we'll have to look at some of the feasibility aspects of some of these. But it gives you kind of a broad brush in terms of potential actions that we could look at, and we'll go through a process of refining those as we talk to the city council also. So, yes, we're available for any questions you might have or any input.
Any questions? Comments? Concerns? You're nodding, are you going?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let somebody else start this one.
I'll give it a go. I feel like I'm going to have, I'm going to jump around, I think. But I'll just start with a few observations that I thought, I don't know, I'm just going to share for brainstorming purposes. So, yeah, looking at the emissions and just seeing the transportation being the largest sector of emissions and then our actions. I was expecting to see more transportation-related actions if that is the largest sector. So it surprised me that there were, I think there were only like two or three related. So I'm just sharing that thought. And then, and so I guess maybe I'm saying I expected more or maybe we should explore more. And then, let's see. Yeah, a lot of these, I also was thinking like, gosh, the mode share, like, that's such a big change in everyone's lifestyle. And, you know, I hear, even like when I come here, I could walk here, but there's like a million reasons why I end up driving. And so, I don't know, I just have to like really try to ground myself of like, how do we accomplish that if I feel passionate about this? And I even struggle with making that shift. So, yeah, I like the idea of talking more about incentivizing or like trying to get folks on board or like, I don't know, just, yeah, those are some thoughts there. And then, and then also making sure we have the. And then, and then also making sure we have like the infrastructure to make that happen. And like we, I feel like Wilsonville does a really good job with the bike lanes that we have and the sidewalks and that kind of infrastructure, but like any more opportunities to make sure that happens, like I think that's, we just need to make sure the infrastructure's there to encourage people to be able to do that. And then, I was wondering about the community survey. So I, yeah, I looked at it too late, so it was already closed. Was that survey asking about the actions or what was the survey covering?
No, the open house is really more geared towards trying to solicit that type of input.
Okay.
Yeah. We were, we were looking at, you know, basically perceptions and, you know, it had some lists in there, some things that, you know, would people be willing to do these types of things?
Yeah.
But it, the, the actions that we're discussing tonight is more so in terms of the open house.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, yeah, maybe at some point when we talk about this again, we can get like the results of that, the community survey, just to see.
Sure.
Because I'm curious.
Yeah, we can share that, and then I was gonna mention when Muriya was discussing the industry, like the 20% reduction.
Yeah.
We have some pretty specific questions in there about things that they would be willing to consider.
Okay.
And, you know, it deals with their material handling and waste and other types of things and, you know, green energy. So, so we hope if we get a good turnout with the forum that we can get into a little bit more detail with some of the industries or businesses.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then one thing, in the staff report, it mentioned like a team coming together, like climate action kind of team representing from different departments. And I, there were some departments that I didn't see include, like, I think library might not have been in there or police, I don't know, just different teams. So I'm like curious, you know, there's all kinds of ways different departments can brainstorm and just making sure that they get the opportunity to be involved if they want to be. And I'll leave it there, just, yeah.
Thanks, it's great input. Commissioner Scott.
So I have some questions and some possible suggestions. This is being driven, it looks like the data is being driven down from the state into the Wilsonville community and all that. How much of that state activity is being driven from a federal perspective? And I guess my follow-up question to that would be, you know, things could, you know, things are definitely going to change here over the next several years, so do we stay on track? Do, you know, how do we, how do we navigate through that process?
Yeah, maybe, I don't, do you, Muriya, do you feel comfortable answering that question?
Sure, I can try, but I need a little clarification. What activity are you, are you thinking about specifically? Are you thinking of sort of the regulatory side of things or?
Yes, yes. Yeah, because basically, if I understand it, it, most of it is regulatory and it flows down into the community and then it's, you know, it's state actions, it's county actions, it's community actions and all that. And I know that we have goals and, you know, throughout the whole activity, whether it be transportation, buildings or something, and all that, I think those are going to be very fluid and everything. So, you know, do we, are we gonna work from just general, general goals there and stay the course or as a community or, you know, how do we, how are we, how do we intend to manage through that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question that you ask because I think there's a tendency in a lot of communities to assume that the state will, will achieve a certain amount or that there will be a certain amount of support or regulatory strength coming from the state. And in fact, in the communities that are being really successful at this, they're taking a much more grassroots approach to things, and there's actually a lot that can be done at a local level to incentivize these things to happen. Obviously, that depends on many factors, everything from budgetary factors to community involvement and so on. But I would say it's helpful to be cautiously optimistic so that you are hoping that the state follows through on a lot of these things. SSG actually did a study with a bipartisan group from representing the state of Oregon, the Department of Energy, and they did an in-depth study on the, the energy transition and the economic impact of that and came to a very positive conclusion about that. So that's actually referenced on the state website. And because it was bipartisan, I think you have a good reason to hope that there, there will be persistence in that belief at a state level. But at the same time, be, be, be ready to engage the opportunities locally to really support this change because the co-benefits of these changes, like you could forget all about the climate crisis and the good things that come out of all of these shifts are incredibly beneficial for the community, everything from air quality to job creation to much lower energy costs for households. And all of those things are good enough reasons on their own to support this work. So cautiously optimistic but also ready to embrace it from the city's perspective would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Second question would be relative to the commercial and residential structures and even the industrial structures. Assuming that the goals here are being set around new construction, is that true?
I think it would be probably, yeah, new construction, but if somebody were to come in to get a little bit remodeling or, you know, adding something to a existing structure. You know, that, those requirements, you know, would probably come into play too. Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because my thought leads me down the road to the point where there's a lot of existing structures, you know, residential, commercial, in the community and, you know, what kind of incentives and ideas can we provide to the existing owners and occupiers to help the, help, help the process and help the program?
Yeah, I think it would depend on, you know, the extent that somebody's doing something with an existing structure. But I'd probably have to consult with like our building official with some of this to see how some of it might apply. So we could look into that more, though.
Yeah, because I know there was, and I'm not sure what, what is now, but there were solar incentives there for quite a long time, and I think that those have expired, and I don't know that there's any consideration to re-establishing those moving forward. And, you know, and there's other, you know, wind and all the others that you can apply there too, and I don't know if there's incentives for that either. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, I think the new construction is a, is a positive step forward, but I think there's a lot of existing stuff in the city, in the community that we could, we could look for ideas to apply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Willard.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think one of my comments was around those incentives as well and around, I don't know if it's possible to, to model the climate action improvements that would be available without incentivizing the efficiency targets and with incentivizing the efficiency targets to help us motivate potentially recruiting funding for those incentives.
Okay. Could you touch on that, Muriya?
Yes, it isn't straightforward to model, to model the impact of incentives themselves because that varies a lot from community to community. It varies based on the prices that people are paying, it varies based economic income levels. But what we can do is give you a sense of the cost impacts and the savings and some general guidance on the, the levels of incentives in general that motivate people and, and how much of an incentive you have to give for a risky, what people perceive to be as a risky new technology versus an established technology, a few things like that. So we can give you that kind of guidance and give you some suggestions about next steps to actually get a better assessment for some of those things. But it's, that's exactly the right kind of thinking as you move into your implementation part of this plan.
Okay. The other comment I have is a little, it's around the transportation as well, and I was surprised to see not, very little transportation in there. It seems to me that the backup phenomenon that happens on I-5 at the Boone Bridge is a huge contributor to emissions, producing carbon. And I'd love to see it modeled, that what improvement we could expect or not expect as a, as part of an eventual Boone Bridge expansion. Because if, you know, we have that timeline and it, it shows a slight decrease over, up until 2050 in, in transmission, but it would be great to see if there's a point in time when that bridge expansion either hurts or helps, you know, because it could help, so we don't have the backup, but it could hurt because it decreases or increases trips because people are no longer motivated to make other arrangements. But modeling that would be pretty cool, and if the outcomes are that it's climate action plan-friendly, let's use it to motivate the state to pull in that project or do that project. It's, I don't know if it's even on the books, but, you know, get, if it's on the calendar out there on the horizon, but get it on the horizon. Use it as a motivator, that data as a motivator.
Commissioner Hebbrell.
Awesome. Yeah, first, I want to second Commissioner Scott's discussions around the existing infrastructure and, and in my mind especially around solar. You know, we, we identify the draft actions 100% of new buildings, including solar, by 2050, but that also means that by 2050, there's a heck of a lot of existing buildings. I mean, we're gonna have more existing buildings than we are gonna generate new buildings. So, you know, having a way to incentivize the existing buildings, I think, is, is something that we should consider as, as a draft action.
Okay.
Let's see, mode shift, how were those number, how were those percentages generated in terms of how we came up with 30% carpool, 6% walker bike, 7% transit?
Do you want to take that one?
Sure, yeah. Those were taken from some neighboring communities. I think we looked at Tygarden and also from the Clackamas County Plan as, as averages that could potentially be used in your community, I believe. Now, I'm actually gonna check with Hillary. Did we draw in any of the context review documents for that?
I believe it was primarily the Tygarden and Clackamas plans, like you said.
Okay.
But we could double-check that.
And that's comps to their plan, not to what they're actually achieving?
Yes, that was their, what we modeled for them, which they, they wanted to see as a potential scenario that they would work towards. So that is, all of these actions are to give you a sense of one of the pathways you could take to get to carbon, to net zero. So they may choose a different approach, they may accelerate, do more with active transportation or more with transit, and we can certainly adjust those numbers. They were a starting point.
Okay. And then on the carpool side, is that carpooling within Wilsonville? Is that carpooling out of Wilsonville? What, what is that definition on the carpooling side?
All of the trips that we model include traffic into and out of as well as trips taken entirely within Wilsonville. So we, we handle all of that and, and then we attribute the emissions generally to the origin of the, of the trip. So if the trip starts outside of Wilsonville, it would not be included within your inventory that you're asking, so carpooling would work the same way?
Okay.
Is that, I'm not getting at what you're asking?
No, no, you're, I think you're getting exactly what I'm asking. It's, it's more of a, that seems like a, a huge percentage of, of trips being carpool. So I would just be curious to see if we, if there are any communities that are getting anywhere close to that in current state, just because it seems like a lot. You know, 7% transit when you're at, what it looked like was maybe 3%. Okay, that's, you know, that's not a huge lift, but I, I'm not exactly sure where we are at the carpool side, but if we're at 5% and going from 5 to 30, that's a lot, so.
Yeah, and that can, if you feel that that is, that there would be a more appropriate value to use or to emphasize a different service, more like transit, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I mean, they all have their challenges. I think that's the thing I'm struggling with is, you know, this is the one for me that, yeah, I don't know if it's the most challenging, but it, it requires a significant change in behaviors across a wide swath of the community. And, and that's where I'm just not sure, I want to make sure I like the idea, I just want to make sure that the draft action we have in there is, is achievable, even if it is a little bit on the aspirational side.
Sure.
Yeah.
Rooted in reality.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's see, I got a few more. 100% solar by 2050. Where, do we have any idea of where we are right now in terms of new building construction? Are we at zero or are we at 10% of new buildings have solar?
I'm not sure if I have that number.
Okay.
At this point, yeah.
And then what was the driver for it being 2050 for that?
I'll let, yeah.
That was, that was one where we were reaching out and giving you the longest possible timeline, I think largely because the state clean energy initiatives should be accomplishing a lot of this for you in terms of cleaning the grid. But as much as you can put onto new buildings will increase your ability to withstand something like a power outage, and if you've got solar and battery backup together on new buildings, then those buildings become more resilient. So, but the timeline, it can, it can certainly be adjusted. I would actually recommend that we pull it a little earlier than that.
Yeah, I was thinking either that or at least having some sort of stepping stone in between.
Right.
So that, that we start working that way.
So just like 50% by?
50 by 2035.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, something, something where we can start that process, because waiting all the way until 2050 to, you know, if it's a code change that says, okay, January 1, 2050, you shall have PV on all buildings, that's a lot of stuff from now to then that we haven't tried to capture.
It's a big haul.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so maybe if it's even, okay, all the stuff in Coffee Creek needs, you know, solar PV, you know, starting in 2030, you know, somewhere where you're going to at least have some fairly large acreage of solar PV. I mean, residential construction, it's good, but it's not, I'm guessing not where the real bang for the buck is.
Right.
So.
And it can have a negative effect on affordability.
Yeah.
For housing, which we don't want to do in the immediate horizon.
And then on this slide, RNG on the lower right-hand corner, what does RNG stand for?
That's the natural gas.
Renewable natural gas.
Okay. That we're capturing.
Is that renewable natural gas? Because is it just natural gas at that point? Because we're not.
It's not fossil.
And this, this one might be a challenge just because we just recently completed a wastewater treatment plant, master plan, which is already at, I think, $200 million.
Yeah, a really expensive project.
So I, I think this one, you know, we definitely have to get the input of, of our staff in regards to the feasibility of something like this. Maybe, maybe this would be pushed out even further, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, it's an expensive process, but, you know, there are good examples. I think the city of Gresham, maybe you could touch upon that one, Muriya, that it's, it's a nice example out there.
But it would also be interesting to look at, is it, even if the technology got cheaper for the RNG at the wastewater treatment facility, where that facility is located is not really friendly for getting natural gas out of it.
Yeah.
It's from the generation perspective, and so is it, is it feasible from just a logistics perspective?
Right, yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's always good to do feasibility studies that take into consideration all of those, those factors as you get closer to them. But the RNG has, it has a lot of value in terms of being able to provide really high heat, particularly to industry that needs high heat. And so in some cases, you can sell it without being able to put it, or without putting it into the natural gas lines. You sell it directly to industry and you get quite a good price for it, and it is a way of virtually eliminating your wastewater emissions as well as a lot of the treatment, the problems that afflict wastewater treatment plants like fat soils and grease is causing them to burn out motors and things like that. You can develop a very efficient system that takes care of a lot of those things, provides revenue rather than being a high cost, and actually helps you transition to a cleaner future. So it's a very powerful system and it certainly could be something you'd look into at the end of the life of the one that you just upgraded significantly.
Yeah, I think the city of Gresham, that, I don't, I think it was fairly recent, they have a net zero treatment plant now. have a net zero treatment plant now.
It's actually emissions positive in the sense that it
Oh, emissions, okay.
It actually takes more emissions out than it contributes, and it's also now provides, I think, about $400,000 in savings to the city relative to what it used to have to spend on the facility.
Okay, upper right-hand corner, 50% of organic waste diverted from landfill by 2030. Does that diversion include reduction in generation of organic waste, or is that just the same organic waste stream, we're just diverting 50% of it?
It is, it could be handled either way, that's sort of an implementation question. Sometimes we model it as a reduction in the generation, sometimes we model it as a diversion from the landfill. Usually through implementation, you achieve this with different reductions in different parts of the waste stream, if that makes sense.
Okay, all right, so then maybe that could be 50% of organic waste reduced slash diverted from landfill, just as a way to show that, yeah, where the option is there to reduce the amount that's coming in, not just diverting what's already being generated. Let's see, where was I? Okay. The 100% renewable electricity generation by 2040, why is that a draft Wilsonville action when, are we generating a significant amount of electricity? I'm trying to understand why that one isn't more of a state, you know, a larger area one.
Which one was that?
100% renewable electricity generation by 2040, is that?
Yes, that actually is, that one is, because it's gray, the two gray boxes on that slide are actually state initiatives, so those are, they're not so much draft low-carbon actions, they're there as placeholders to represent part of what will get you to your low-carbon goals.
Okay, so those, the assumption is those are part of the calculations, but not something that we are going to put implementation measures in place to get to.
But they factor into the low-carbon scenario, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that true, Morya? I don't want to misstate that.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. And then, okay, comment and then I'm done. I think overall, this is really good, I like this. The one thing, as I was looking at these, that it would be nice to understand is what the magnitude of cost or how painful it would be to do it, because you know, if one of these is, okay, 100% of new PVs is a $3 billion project, but the other ones are $50 million, well, shoot, you know, we should be focusing on the ones that are as cost-effective as possible. So I know it's so early, it's hard to really nail down what a number would be, but if there was any way that we could at least try to, you know, get a high-level thought of how painful is this going to be, how costly is this going to be, or how, you know, difficult is it going to be just from a technological perspective, some way that we could help filter these and come down to, all right, these are, you know, if we're saying, hey, let's get down to six, you know, whatever the number is, give us a way to help try to kind of narrow into that.
Yeah, I did ask the same thing in terms of the development of the plan, that we have at least that magnitude of cost, and that was something that SSG thought they could work with us on.
Okay, fantastic.
Will it take implementation of all of these to hit the 45% reduction by 2035 and 80% by 2050? Or a portion of them? Again, that kind of goes to my thought on cost as well. Do we have to hit it out of the park on all of these to make those goals?
I think maybe you could explain it in the context of those graphs that we showed earlier, because that's really what this is tied to.
Yeah, it is a multi-pronged attack that is required. There isn't a silver bullet or even just a few actions that will get any community to the goals that we need to reach. It is going to be a concerted effort across almost all, if not all, of these types of actions. So it's a multi-vacated effort, and it will affect many parts of the way that the city operates and the way that citizens get around, so I appreciate the comments that were made earlier about how a lot of this affects lifestyle choices and culture and so on, but it is not really a matter, if we're looking at actually achieving the goals, it's a matter of pushing as hard as we can on a lot of these, but at the same time, if we only get to 95%, that is going to get us a huge amount of the way there. So we try not to emphasize it in such a way that you become overwhelmed, because a lot of these things, once they get rolling, they're very self-perpetuating. So pushing hard on them is, will be tremendously beneficial and will probably be self-propelling for many reasons. But yes, it is across the board, it isn't just a few.
And I'm assuming all the surrounding communities are going through a similar exercise?
Yeah, I mean, city of Tualatin, they adopted their own climate action plan, like I mentioned, they didn't get adopted, but Clackamas County completed one. What are some of the other communities you've worked with in the area, Morya?
Tygarden is another one.
Tygarden, yep.
Yep, and there are many more communities that are now involved in this because primarily of the funding that came through from the IRA. So there's nationwide, there are plans being developed around this, and there's still a lot of funding available. And the EPA did a very good job of putting that funding in such, allocating that funding in such a way that it won't, it will be difficult for the federal administration to withdraw it. So we really encourage you to look into that, and we'll do our best to help you with that. But there's a lot of funding available for things like fleet transitions and installing solar and supporting solar installations residentially and so on. So now I think I'm drifting from your question, from sorry.
But what's the impact effect punishment of not hitting 45 by 2035 and 80 by 2050?
I would say it's going to be significantly increased costs to municipalities in particular, but also to other levels of government and to insurance companies and residences. It's, there will be, we call it the cost of doing nothing, or also the social cost of carbon. So as the impacts of climate change play out, there will be shifts that are going to cause there to be significantly more insurance claims. I think the situation in California is something that is an excellent example and a tragic example of, we have about seven, I think, major insurers who have now pulled out of the state and are unwilling to insure properties there anymore. So the impact of that is going to be hitting people quite dramatically the longer this gets delayed. So the sooner things can shift, the less of an impact there will be, and that will be to everyone's benefit, I think.
But there's no, there's like penalties that the federal government will instill upon us?
Well, the percentages you're mentioning are from that executive order at the state level, and that's reflected in some of the work that, you know, Dan's going to be talking to you tonight about, so I guess I'm not sure about what would happen if local communities don't go ahead and implement some of that. I mean, I assume there would be.
That's an open question, it's really a prioritization of the state, because, for example, right, if there's, I can't speak completely for the state, but there is limited amount of staff and resources on the state level, and so there can be decisions whether to focus on enforcing housing-related code versus climate-related code, and there may be, because of limited resources, the need to make those decisions at the state level. No fair.
Thank you. Okay. Hopefully that answered your question.
Well, kind of. I mean, you know, it's, is, what's the punitive damage of us not doing, other than obviously the environment itself?
Right.
But, yeah, is mom and dad going to come after me for not cleaning my room, or am I just going to have to live in a dirty room? Right? Because many of these, as Ms. Commissioner Heberlin alludes to, these are going to be expensive. These are not, obviously, commercial buildings will become more expensive, houses will become more expensive, probably the renewable energy, you know, all of these have a cost that's going to be associated with them, and it's not just a one-and-done cost, it's an ongoing expenditure.
Right.
And so, yeah, it's like, if we get 40% by 2035, you know, are we good? Are we happy? Or do we have to hit on all cylinders on every single one of these?
If I could respond to that, I think there are definitely increased incremental costs upfront for many of these things. However, in some cases, that is, that fact is fading fast. So renewable electricity is now generally much less expensive than fossil fuel energy, and that is now allowing renewable energy to roll on its own. Within Texas, there's a tremendous shift towards renewables precisely for that reason. And so the more that that happens, the less of an issue it's going to be, the capital costs do not become such an issue. The payback for other things like building improvements is very much in the long-term affordability of homeownership or of building ownership. So if you completely eliminate the energy costs from a house, which is, can be done easily with retrofits and with solar installations and energy storage, for example, you do increase the initial cost of the home by approximately 4%, that is the national average, but the long-term energy savings are, the fact that you reduce energy costs almost to zero are tremendous in terms of encouraging affordability. So if the story is positioned fully like that, you're actually improving the affordability of the houses that you build, and you're also making them healthier, their quality is better. So there is a broader picture to be told, and we'll be trying to share that with you so that you can inform your decisions by all of those factors.
Yeah, understand that. I mean, a retrofit of a house is different than a new construction, putting solar in. So my neighbor just did a retrofit and the payback is 15 years. So, I mean, that's a substantial delta that many existing homes wouldn't be able to afford.
Yeah.
Right, which also means this is going to affect our home affordability, right, which we've already got lots of initiatives going on trying to figure out how to keep housing affordable. So those are conflicting goals, right?
Yeah, and I think we'll have to balance those as we go forward with this and really come to an agreement about what percentage we would require or how we would word that, and would it affect, you know, both new and existing, or I don't think we have all those answers for you here right now, but yeah.
Things to think about.
Yeah.
Okay, other?
One more?
Yes, Commissioner Schalles.
Just one more question. In the reduction curves that you guys had, you were showing and all that, how much consideration is factored into that for the advancement in technologies? Technology seems to turn every 18, 24 minutes or so, and, you know, there's an efficiency improvement just in the technology itself. Is that factored into this?
I guess I'll point to Morya again, since they're the ones that the experts had developed in these, yeah.
When we do a financial analysis, after we've completed the low-carbon modeling, which is not part of our project for Wilsonville at this point in time, but when we do that, then we incorporate those improvements into the cost element of things. So we reflect a reduction in capital cost to reflect the upscaling of, you know, operationalizing large-scale manufacturing. It is not represented in terms of the efficiencies of technologies or anything like that. We assume the current efficiencies and lifespans of the technologies that would be used.
Okay. Just a quick add-on to that one. You know, thinking about the novel technologies like, you know, carbon sequestration and some of the things that are coming out, I wonder if there is any value in having a draft action for implementing, you know, new technologies or whatever it might happen to be, to give us the opportunity to have that as one of the things that we could use going forward. Yeah, it may not be ready right now, but in 2035, there may be something that would be great, that would be more cost-effective than, you know, trying to get 50% of organic waste diverted from a landfill. Some way for us to recognize that there's stuff out there that we don't know of yet that may have a positive impact.
So it becomes a trades analysis, essentially?
Okay, that's a great suggestion, thank you. Were there any other questions or input? I know we've probably gone off. So I'm just going to wrap it up here with the next steps. You know, we've looked at this a little bit before, but, you know, we'll be taking ultimately, when we have those draft actions defined and in agreement about those, we'll run those through that last scenario there, that will really form the basis then for drafting the plan and bringing, you know, that document back to you. And so we're looking, you know, that would be sometime in the spring, you know, and then we're looking at ultimate adoption, probably in the June-July period there, so we have a number of months yet in terms of, you know, working through this. And so, as I mentioned, not only are we going to have the open house and the industry forum, but one of the things I'm still working on is some outreach to the schools, and so I'm hoping to, in some ways, you know, just have a discussion with students about this and, you know, just try to understand, you know, sort of their priorities and, you know, their desires. So the goal is to do this at the primary, middle, A and high school level, so that'll probably have to be, it'll probably most likely be in February, might have to move out to March, but, and then, yeah, we'll just keep moving forward with, you know, developing the draft plan and then coming back through the process of working with the planning commission and city council. So that's about it.
If I may, just briefly, Chair Carr and Commission, Mr. Rappel, could you just announce for those at home watching, the date and time for the open house?
Thank you. So yes, the public open house will be held here at City Hall, and it'll be in the Willamette River Rooms upstairs, and the open house will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
On the 16th?
16th, yeah, sorry. Yeah, January 16th. Thank you.
Excellent, yeah. Thank you, Miranda. Hearing no further discussion, thank you, that concludes this work session.
Thank you so much, it was some great input that you provided.
All right, that takes us to the next work session item, which is the Climate Friendly and Economic Communities Parking, the CPEC parking. This work session is a chance for the planning commission to gain additional understanding of and provide guidance on ongoing legislative projects prior to a public hearing. At this time, I call for city staff to proceed, to present information. They are prepared for the work session. Will city staff please present?
Certainly. Good evening, planning commissioners, again for the record, I'm Daniel Polly, I'm the city's planning manager, and with me tonight is Brian Davis with Studio Davis, who's supporting this project and knows a lot about parking, among other things, so welcome him, and let me bring up the presentation quickly. So tonight, I will introduce some things, and then before I turn it over to Brian. And I will try to get through this without seeing frog pond or habitable.
Where's your sense of venture, Dan?
Yeah. So we are here to talk about the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Parking Compliance and Standards Reform Project. In particular, really focusing in on what this day calls the Parking B compliance, as opposed to Parking A, that's already essentially been in place, as well as some anticipated development code amendments. So I want to, since we had some time to talk about this back in December, to introduce it to you, but want to briefly go over the background, the goals and the scope of why we're doing this, and then really focus in on these Parking B compliance options and explaining those options to you, and hearing your feedback there, and certainly And certainly, the project team has a recommendation, but that's not, I just wanted to stress that's not a foregone conclusion. We're here to ask, present all the options and ask your input as well. And then, once we talk about those compliance options, we'll go into some of the development code amendments that are being required as well. So let's get into the review. So it's all based on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules. We've talked a lot in the last hour about transportation. And certainly, I think, basically, the notion is if parking, parking takes up land, it creates heat islands, so there's that aspect of it, but also it, ample parking contributes to mode choice as well, obviously. I think we all understand that. And we've made mode choices before. If we're like going downtown or something where there may not be ample parking, certainly that can contribute to our mode choice. Or if you're going to Disneyland and parking costs so much, then you may make another mode choice, since there's not free parking, for example. So however, I also want to reiterate that this, the CPEC program, something we're going to be talking about for a while, parking is just one component of it. We'll also be talking about some other things related to transportation plan in the coming years outside of parking. So we talked about this last time. Obviously, a big part of this is compliant with, with the state rules. But we also, in this, as we typically do, we want to look for opportunities to better encourage, to improve our built environment and the function of our, our city. So there, as mentioned, there's two compliance phases. Parking A, which is already in effect. There is a number of components of that, which you can see in your pass packet, but really just want to take the time again to focus in, because of its interrelatedness to Parking B, is what my word, our words is transit proximity rule, which supersedes parking minimums for the vast majority of the city already. And so, in essence, just makes the Parking B options apply to specific areas, including Charbonneau. There's a few little, you know, areas, you know, a couple houses right down by the river or something like that, but primarily Charbonneau, the western two-thirds of Vilwa, and the northwest industrial area. And we are required to finish this all in the first half of this year. So that's why we're here talking to you now. So with that, any questions about that background? Any clarifications? Are we all kind of feeling solid of where we're coming from and why we're doing this project? Commissioner Heffler.
Thank you. Just one, because I had to. So on the previous slide, what is the percentage of land that is under Parking B versus under Parking A? And the reason why I'm asking that is anticipating public feedback and, and looking to understand, you know, Parking B is a very small percentage of the overall land in Wilsonville. We've, we're already required to do the majority of this under Parking A. So just trying to understand that and potentially be able to provide a way for us to explain to the residents that this, what we're doing here is only a very small percentage of Wilsonville that we're, is actively being discussed.
I will calculate those percentages. I can guess, estimate now, but I think further messages can go forward. We can certainly have those. And I think both overall as well as vacant or available for development land.
Yeah, that'd be great.
What percentage it is? Okay, any?
Any other?
Okay. With that, I will turn it over to Brian to start talking through the compliance options.
Hi. So, sorry. Brian Davis, Studio Davis here. I'll try and find like the perfect distance here where I can be audible and not feedback. Yeah, so I'm essentially here tonight in, well, in the capacity of the D and, or DLCD's Axeman to, yeah, tell you what you can and can't do with parking anymore. And so this is the map that kind of gets to, to your question. Most of Wilsonville, so obviously of Wilsonville Station, that, the way the, the rules are written up, anything within a three-quarter mile circle of, of a train station, lighter heavy rail, is, you can no longer enforce minimum parking requirements within that three-quarter mile circle, and everything within a half-mile buffer of a frequent transit line. And we dove into the way they define that in the new administrative rules. And both of the smart lines through Wilsonville do qualify as frequent transit for that purpose. So basically, in aggregate, you already have the vast majority of Wilsonville, I guess Dan will get you the actual percentage, but everything except a couple little residential areas, as well as the industrial land on the north and northwest side of the city, is already covered under, under what we're calling Parking A there. There's a little bit of nuance that we'll get to, mostly regarding parking maximums. But essentially, the Parking B requirement gives you three options essentially for how you want to meet it. The first way is you can remove all minimum parking requirements citywide. If you do that, that's, you kind of wash your hands and you're basically done with, with this particular package. There's some other development code things that are mostly pretty minor in nature that you have to implement that we'll get to in a minute. But yeah, if you remove all parking requirements citywide, requires no further action to meet the, the letter of this particular reform. You also have two other options. Both of those would retain parking minimums within the non-exempt area, so just that small sliver on the west, south, and northwest part of the city. Essentially, option two requires you to implement two fairly significant and impactful parking reforms from the bullet point list there. Option three requires all three of the bullet points listed below there that are, I guess, you know, somewhat less impactful, but in aggregate would hopefully tamp down on parking demand there. So next slide, please.
Brian, did you want to mention what you've seen other cities do? I know they have some of that in their packet.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So it's, the vast majority of cities are going with option one. And essentially, a lot of that is administrative, working with Oregon City, which is, yeah, and actually Cornelius as well, which are both in fairly similar situations. Cornelius is another example. They're choosing option one because they have, I forget what TriMet line it's on, but it goes right down. I also, it's not ninety-nine. I always get my highways confused, but the TV highway right through the middle of the city to Forest Grove, either there's a frequent bus line there and that half-mile is the vast majority of Cornelius. So, yeah, for, for that reason, and I think just because there's a lot of administrative difficulty there, particularly with things like unbundling parking, it's hard from, from your perspective in terms of how do you approve or not approve projects based on their requirement. It's hard from the staff perspective to monitor that because there's got to be some sort of ongoing program. So for, for mostly practical reasons, a lot of cities are choosing option one. I think, I could get to your numbers, but the vast majority of the ones that have already come into compliance with this have in fact gone with option one. But not in any, not in every case. So for instance, option three in Oregon City is where it's looking like that, that's going. They have a somewhat smaller percentage of their land area than you guys do or than Cornelius does that would be exempt under the, you know, the transit proximity rule or climate-friendly areas are also exempt from parking minimums. And they already have a few of the programs in place that are required under option three. So, yeah, so it, it's sort of, the majority of cities are taking option one, but it's, it's very context sensitive in terms of what's already being done. And also frankly, in terms of the politics of each city, sometimes eliminating parking requirements in certain cities is easier than in others. So, yeah. Is that kind of what you were after there? Yeah. Yeah, so essentially, we've kind of been going through the code, going through the administrative requirements and, you know, seeing what has to, what can be retained, where already in compliance, where you're almost in compliance, or maybe in compliance with a little asterisk or things where we think you may be in compliance, but we have to circle back with DLCD. So in, in the report I did for your packet, you'll see some of those areas where I kind of give a little bit more detail in terms of, okay, this is currently in compliance, this is mostly, this is mostly in compliance, but we're going to need to implement minor change, this or that. There are some areas where there's, you know, certainly some, you know, some latitude in terms of how you may want to implement the changes that you need, need to implement. And, yeah, and then the last category are things where we're just not sure and we're going to circle up with DLCD and get a more solid answer. So I do have that meeting scheduled for next week, so don't have the, the kind of clarifications that that document says we're going to get yet, but we expect them in about a week. So.
I think at this point, we can't cover the different options. I don't know if there's any of those.
Going back to, to these options, any of like the choices under two and three that you want more detail on or any questions that we can ask there?
Any questions?
Great answer.
You use all yours. I don't believe we have any additional questions at this point.
Then I will put this question up because certainly, as, as a project team, we're seeing option one being kind of the most prudent choice in terms, for a number of reasons, including, as outlined in the staff report, you know, it's, we don't, based on where it is, a lot of it's built out. So in, in, you know, in a foreseeable future, we don't see a substantial different outcome. And with the administrative costs that Brian talked about, we also don't see, you know, really if you do invest in that, it's getting the bing for your buck because you're really not going to see much of a different outcome because residential areas are pretty much built out. And then the industrial areas, history has shown us that that's one use that generally does provide parking regardless of what the city, the city requires.
Can you go back to the map?
Yeah. I think I may have messed up the slide there, so that's why it's kind of, but that's okay. We, we're on track.
We could also move it all into Parking Option A if there were major bus lines to these areas, right? So if we had a major bus line that went into the industrial area, that would then exempt that from?
Correct. So essentially Parking A is always based on the frequency of transit routes. So as the city grows, for example, and we're expanding into Frog Pond east and south and being able to provide our own transit service, Smart is able to easily expand and modify their route to go into those neighborhoods and serve those neighborhoods. And so by the extension of that frequent line into those new neighborhoods, it then would modify the half-mile buffer.
Right.
And expand that boundary as the line moves. So similarly, if one of our smart transit lines that's running up through the industrial area were to modify its frequency and become as frequent as one of these other lines, then there would be a half-mile buffer around that transit line as well.
So do we have, because I know we have a transit master plan that's into the future, do we have existing lines planned in the future to go into that northwest industrial area?
So northwest industrial area, not so much. Certainly Vilwa, the Vilwa line's going, and so that could increase frequency and it's foreseeable that Vilwa would, could be added to, further added to that.
And then what about Charbonneau? Any bus line plans down there?
I mean, there's the Cambie Route that goes by Charbonneau, but it's not as frequent as like the Cross-Temp Shuttle. Don't foresee that being the case.
But I mean, Charbonneau is built out, so it's not, parking isn't really relevant.
Can I ask about, sorry, can I?
Yes, you may.
Question, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So prior to my current job, I worked at Smart. And one of the conversations that we were having a lot was like with TriMet because they had the ninety-six line that goes in that area that you're asking about. And so I don't know where those conversations are at anymore because I've been gone for a while. Does the team know? Frequency of the ninety-six?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Hendricks. So at this point in time, that would not be considered a frequent line for TriMet. So part of it is about like the frequency of the community you're in and what the frequency is being served. So that line would not be considered a frequent line for TriMet, so therefore would not be for us. So it's based on our transit service and the frequency, and our frequency is much more frequent than the ninety-six. But it goes based relative to your lines. At least that's the way that we established it with DLCD. And so we do serve our northwest industrial area. I don't want to say it's not served, but the frequency of those lines is lower at this point in time.
At this point?
At this point in time, correct. So there is a plan as we grow into Coffee Creek and Basalt Creek for the bus lines that serve that area to continue to extend. So as we grow and develop into Basalt Creek, those lines that we serve into Coffee Creek now would extend up into Basalt Creek. At this point, they're not as high frequency as the two lines that essentially result in this map. But if that were to change in the future and it was just as frequent as the lines that are mapped here, then we would need to essentially modify our map and modify what areas we can enforce minimum parking standards in or not.
That leans itself even more for me to option one because we're going to eventually cover pretty much the whole city.
And ninety, the ninety-six, probably the map wouldn't change much because it, with the way it comes down Boone's Ferry and to Commerce Circle is essentially already, that area is already within the buffer from the two X.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty fair representation of how we settled on option one as, as a recommendation here. If you went with option two or three, essentially you would have, you know, sort of two kind of pieces of code, well, you'd have the, you know, the main city code, which would be vastly bigger and more complex than what ninety-some percent of the city is probably under, right? Which would be very Clackamas County of you, but maybe not. Maybe not the simplest way for developers to understand what they can and can't do when they, when they want to come in here. And then again, if, you know, if you went with option one, it would just kind of take, you know, the, the variables regarding what TriMet or Smart may do off the table in terms of having to. And I think you get, you know, when there's rerouting of a bus line, I think they give you something like five years or maybe ten years to redraw that map, but even so, it would be something you wouldn't have to worry about moving forward.
Well, I think the easiest and least administrative and least confusing to future development is option one. And since the northwest, that, that's going to be where we have future development. So the, the other areas are pretty much already built out and minimum parking is not really a relevant topic.
And also, keep in mind that even if, like typically, parking has not been a big issue historically for a lot of like detached homes or old houses. It's usually around multifamily. And multifamily is limited regardless of what you do to one-half.
Yeah.
Per unit.
Okay.
And some of these. So, so with that, I mean, I'll ask the question whether the commission concurs with pursuing rec, option one, or do the, any, do the commissioners see merit in further exploration of either option two or three?
We'll start over here. Commissioner Skoll, what are your thoughts?
I pick option one. You know, it seems that, again, eighty percent, ninety percent of the city is already kind of structured and option one aligns with that. And then option one would also help us or would actually follow into the future. And I think that's the simplest and easiest way rather than having two or three sets of rules.
Option one.
I was ready to go option one to council last month, so I retain that. Option one still.
Yeah, I'm in agreement for all the reasons we've talked about.
Yes, in, in agreement. And yeah, the, the analysis that was done was very helpful. The map was, was definitely an eye opener to see what, what sections were not already included and to look at it and say, well, yeah, it's, it's not worth building additional complexity into this for that small area. So option one.
All right. Thank you for that feedback. And we will therefore move forward with taking a recommendation around option one to city council.
Any other final thoughts, comments?
I want to talk a bit more about the development code amendment. So I'll give it back to you, Brian, what you want to add here.
Yeah. Um, so the, the other piece of this is basically around whatever parking does wind up getting built under, um, under the new, under the new code. And the goal of these several pieces is to make that, you know, as environmentally friendly as you could possibly make a new parking lot or a new parking garage. So kind of some of the highlights of that and things where I think there's some, you know, really some room for, for, for you guys and for future broader outreach process to kind of frame how we come into compliance here. So, yeah, so there is a requirement and, you know, I'm kind of quoting the, the way it's written in state code, which I think is intentionally written a little bit loosey goosey to allow you some latitude in terms of how you interpret it and, and put that into code. We, we need to have some kind of provision that allows and encourages redevelopment of underused parking, raises several questions, you know, the first being what is underused parking and how do we identify that within the code? There's, as I pointed out, you quote unquote must allow this redevelopment, you should encourage it. So obviously there's some, um, there's some latitude there in terms of how far you do or don't want to go in terms of encouraging it, as long as we have a code provision that does in fact allow it. Similar circumstance with shared parking, you must allow it, you should facilitate it. How do you do that? Um, there's, and this is, you know, above and beyond C-FEC, this is something that has been, uh, you know, it's, it's a sort of, it's a very low hanging fruit, I think, in terms of theoretically reducing your parking demand because what a share, the thing to understand about parking is that you may have an office use that generates X number of spaces and a restaurant that generates Y number of spaces. And you may have them in close proximity to each other. The key thing to ret, to understand is the office will generate that X number of spaces at a certain time of day. Office uses typically are held to have peak demand in the mid morning or mid afternoon. Restaurants, obviously lunchtime and or dinnertime. So shared parking is a way to kind of take the fact that your office is inevitably going to be oversupplied with parking after 6:00 PM. Your restaurant is inevitably going to be oversupplied with parking before noon. So maybe if we allow shared agreements, some, we can, you know, mitigate that to some extent. So how do you want to do that? I have some thoughts. I have some, not even recommendations there, but things to think about in terms of how, how you want to structure that. There's a couple of ways to do that, too. This again is primarily related to the development code. So this is in terms of, you know, if someone needs a certain number of parking spaces, I keep hitting your computer, I'm sorry. You, yeah, there should be a provision that allows some of the parking requirement. If there is a parking requirement, it sounds like there may not be in the future, but we need to have developers be able to meet some, all of that requirement through shared parking. And again, you should facilitate it. How do you want to do that? It's a little bit hard, honestly, for cities to step in and be a negotiating partner because a lot of times these are agreements between private entities. But it, by and large, as long as there's something in the code that allows for that, maybe has a few paths forward if people are considering that, that's going to be the requirement. Another one that's fairly significant, kind of dovetailing into some of the things we talked about with, with the previous work session there. For parking that's constructed, you have to either have tree canopy meeting certain requirements or solar power generation meeting certain requirements or a fee in lieu. The, the fee in lieu, little bit complex and we can get into how that would be structured there. At present, you do have pretty substantial tree canopy requirements in the code. Your sort of easiest path to compliance there would just be adding essentially a minimum canopy requirement, which I think the state has is 40%. Your current code does not stipulate that requirement, but has most everything else that the state is looking for in there. You can also, at your discretion, add an option for people to do solar panels in lieu of the tree canopy. Trade offs would be fairly obvious there would be a power generation station that would be a little bit uglier than a lovely landscape thing. So interesting.
Since all of our vehicles are going to be electric by 2020, 2050, right? We're going to need, we're going to need solar all over the place.
Theoretically, and you're, well, kind of jumping up to, which is good because parking maximums make sense to end on. Also jump into the last row there. Yeah, there are some relatively prescriptive requirements for EV parking. I forget exactly what it is, but essentially you have to have the conduit in place around any new parking lots developed so that up to 40% of those could potentially be electrified. And I think it is written in terms of the conduit. So you don't actually have to put the plugs in there yet. Just have to have, you know, maybe not even the wires, just the pipes to run the wires down. Similar with bike parking, there are fairly prescriptive requirements in terms of what you can and can't require, but there's some flexibility there in terms of how you want to cite bike parking and those sorts of things. So again, those requirements, particularly around bike parking are kept pretty loose and I think just meant to encourage developers to, you know, think about adding, exceeding the minimum requirements there. And also some of this is, you know, things moving forward where it's more going to be a public works issue. So I think there's a requirement that you have to cite. You have to provide bike parking near certain key destinations that are defined by the code, being things like schools, grocery stores, those sorts of things. That's not going to require anything in the code right now, I don't believe, but that's something that, you know, your staff is going to have to work with public works to ensure, kind of moving forward, that those right away requirements are made, are met. And then the last thing, jumping back up one row to parking maximums, because it's another, another case of whether you want to put the exempt areas or the areas under transit under different requirements than the city. You do currently have citywide parking maximums for many, if not most, uses. In some cases, they're a little bit more generous than the DLCD requires. In some cases, they're less generous. Obviously, the ones that are more generous would need to be adjusted, but that only applies for the areas within the transit buffer. And make it even more complex here, I think I'm saying this right, trust but verify, in this particular case, the three quarter mile circle around West Station does not count. So here's a choice that you're faced with. You have to adjust and I have, I think the specifics within the documentation that I gave you, there's only a couple of land uses that are impacted, but you are going to have to, within that half mile buffer of the Smart lines, adjust your parking maximums a little bit. I think multifamily is the key land use that's impacted here. Choice before you and the city council will be whether you want those reduced parking maximums to apply just within that half mile area of the transit, of the Smart groups rather, or whether you also want those parking maximums to be reduced on a citywide basis as well.
And what, what impact does the, because we've talked about Town Center Master Plan having another transit center located in Town Center. So what does that do? Does that create another three quarter radius bubble around that that has different parking rules?
That's just for rail, right?
Yeah, the three quarter requirement is just rail stations.
Okay.
Yeah, the, um, if, if you were to create a transit, I would have to look at that, that might, you know.
It's just going to be a bus transit, I think.
Yeah, that might become a quote unquote climate friendly area.
It's already our climate friendly.
Okay. So, and, um, and in either case, again, if you go with option one, kind of doesn't matter because we're eliminating minimum citywide. With regard to maximums, yeah, again, if it's, if it's already a climate friendly area, that it's not impacted. So it would still just be a case of the maximums need to change within that half mile radius. They do not need to change, but easily could, at your discretion, within the rest of the city.
So are these ones that you're asking DLCD for more clarification on, or are you saying these are the ones that are going to require modifications to existing code?
Those are going to require some modification to existing code. There are a couple elements that I've noted in, in your package there where we're going to see clarification. I forgot what those are offhand.
Other questions, comments?
Does if you have any general guidance as we go into this code writing exercise, it'd be helpful.
My, yeah, general guidance I can do. In general, my preference tends to be towards the encourage versus the prescribe, facilitate versus, or, or should versus the musts, if you will. I hope that's clear.
Commissioner Hebbel.
All right. Yeah, I second Commissioner Willard's on should versus must. Solar, yes. Fee in lieu, maybe. I'm not so sure about fee in lieu. Yeah. Parking max, yes to citywide. I'm not a fan of the complexity of, of trying to do yet again, the, you know, parking A versus parking B kind of thing all over again. If we're going to be consistent, we should be consistent and go with maxes as well. And the EV bike, bike parking, I think I'd need more information on exactly what those, what the flexibility is to see if it's worth doing something about.
Yeah, and we can revisit that in a future work session.
The, the key element of that flexibility, honestly, is probably the, the, the two words at least. So you're required to have the conduit for any new parking to have at least 40% of those spaces be EV spaces. If in fact you have a plan to have 100% EVs by a certain year, you know, it might make sense as part of this to, to have that EV requirement make, yeah, have in code that that EV conduit requirement is going to go up to 100% or something in excess of the 40% for consistency's sake. So that is by and large where that flexibility comes from is, you know, do you want to, do you, do you want to meet the 40% requirement? Do you want to exceed it? There may be a couple various elements there where there's some flexibility in how, but by and large, it's that 40% versus more.
Okay. I think if, if it's the at least, I would probably stay with the 40% just given the lack of certainty around technological advancement and, and, you know, fuel cell, C and G, whatever it might happen to be, 100% electric. I don't know if we're going to get there.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Commissioner Hendricks?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking through like the conversation we just had about like climate action plan. And then like, yeah, this kind of opportunity here, depending on, yeah, how, what actions we end up with and how far we want to move that needle and like, you know, there's, there's lofty goals there. So I'm keeping that in mind and, but I, I concur with what's been stated. I do, I was thinking with the tree canopy option, or specifically the fee in lieu of my first reaction, but maybe need more information was like, well, don't we want to encourage, yeah, more tree or solar or, yeah, solar, I'm comfortable with that instead of like paying for, I don't know. So I was kind of leaning away from that fee in lieu option, but okay with the solar or the tree options.
Yeah, the, the purpose of the fee in lieu option honestly is to, to incentivize not developing parking. So the, the point of that typically, this is Hood River probably is the most successful program I'm aware of in the state regarding that. So with the fee in lieu, there's a, how, how high you set that fee is everything, right? If you set that fee to be relatively high, that would give you a pool of money presumably that you could then, you know, dip into for things like, you know, having a, a big public parking lot in the middle of Town Center where people would ideally park once and walk around to a bunch of businesses rather than drive here, drive there, drive there. So yeah, that's kind of what the fee in lieu program is paid for in Hood River and several other places. Well, actually that's a lie because Hood River intentionally has set theirs to only a few thousand dollars, whereas the cost of developing a parking space is, you know, often many times that. And so, you know, when you're a developer and you're looking at, you know, a hundred thousand dollar bill potentially or whatever to, to build and pave your parking lot, plus the opportunity cost of that empty land versus a relatively small per stall fee, there becomes tremendous incentive there to not develop the parking and instead just.
I totally misunderstood what that was.
Yeah. So, so pretty significant in terms of, you know, whether we're encouraging not building parking or whether we're building parking, but making sure that that's, you know, either energy generative in terms of the solar or at least relatively attractive and presumably with the stormwater and shade implications of tree canopies.
So parking structure that has EV parking available within it would be, I guess, the ultimate goal because then you're taking a lot less land to surface parking for more businesses?
Yeah.
And then it's all solar somehow? Yeah.
That's, um, that would sort of be, I guess, the, the, the Shupean ideal. Donald Shupe is the researcher from UCLA that has done a lot of the, the research on parking management and policy that a lot of the current practice is sort of drawing pretty heavily from. But yeah, in, in an ideal world, you would have as little land as possible devoted to parking and, and that parking would be, you know, egalitarian. It's sort of the big, the big reason you have so much empty parking lots and that sort of thing is this minimum requirement that, you know, every restaurant has to have this many and every restaurant has to have this many. And, and most of the ti, you know, you can only be one place at a time. So again.
So at the ground, at the ground level, it's all solar panels and you park underground?
I was thinking, I thought you were, you were doing a, a green roof with a bunch of solar panels.
Okay, all right. I mean, I can see that. That way you're taking up very little space. All right. We've got it figured out now.
One, one question I just thought of is, um, we have a great example of shared parking with Grace Chapel and Oregon Institute of Technology.
Yeah.
How did that come about? Was that motivated by the private parties or?
Our, I actually worked on the project. And so our code does allow the shared parking within a certain, for certain uses within a certain distance, particularly for non-residential. And so, I mean, that one was pretty straightforward, right?
It's a great example.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was like, why build, why take all this land?
Yeah.
Um, you often see that with religious institutions, you know, because their, their high demand is when people aren't in the offices or shopping centers or whatever. So.
But did the city have to do anything to encourage or facilitate that?
We had to make findings in the land use approval that said they met their minimum parking by the shared parking agreement and had to like have copy of that agreement or like, you know, it was conditioned that they actually get the agreement signed and it's a legal binding agreement so they can meet their minimum parking via that, that shared agreement.
And now we don't have minimum parking anymore.
Okay.
So going off your question though, so like, how was it initiated? Like who?
Is there something we should put in the code to make that?
Yeah.
Encouraged or, or less bureaucratic or anything like that?
You know, I'm trying to remember correctly, but I think it was suggested by the, I mean, it was certainly brought up and suggested by the city because of existing code language, because I mean, we didn't want to see, I mean, that was a great opportunity for redevelopment. Grace Chapel at that point had been looking for a site for a long time, had been like in temporary location and so looking at, you know, being creative and partnering with them to find a site that could be redeveloped and one of the constraints there was limited parking and look, here's a bunch of parking across the street, so.
Okay. Commissioner Heberlin?
So given the additional explanation on the fee in lieu, and thank you for that, Brian, I, I'll change my maybe to a, yeah, I'm interested in the fee in lieu as it supports consolidated parking, yeah, that seems like a great idea.
Any other comments, questions? I think we're good.
All right, well, we'll be back here in a couple of months to kind of share some work on code that we've done and ask any, get your feedback on that, there will also be a public event that you'll be aware of here coming up, working on organizing and then we'll continue this conversation in the next couple of months before we have a public hearing.
All right, thank you, so that concludes that work session. So now we're moving on to the informational part, we have what, city council action minutes? Do we have any specific questions on city council action minutes? Any questions on the calendar?
Yeah, Ms. Patel, so it, it appears that there are some gaps in the calendar right now, do we expect those are going to get filled, because this looks a lot lighter than it has been historically, or are we going to maybe try to find some slots where we pack one side and another and have a month off, or what's the thoughts?
Thank you, Commissioner Heberlin, as you know, typically in January, we don't know yet, there are things in flux, we are, we have a number, we've wrapped a couple really big projects, as you know, you had some big hearings last year particularly related to housing, so we are still, we're very busy on the housing needs and production strategy work as well as this work, we are also scoping at this point in time a revamp of the city's comprehensive plan, that project has not been funded or adopted officially as part of the work program and the budget at this point in time, but that is a project we're looking at, which would obviously heavily involve the commission, there's a couple other smaller, long range projects we're also trying to figure out the best timing for, so we often at this point, this is, you asked me this question before in other years, and then we fill it every month. So, you know, I think we're hopeful that because you have had a lot of hearings and a lot of meetings, that maybe this year we can give you a month off, we try to, i- if there's that opportunity, especially in like late summer, if we're able to push everything to like July and September, give you August off, we do like to do that, I think it's too early for us at this point in time to know for sure, we want to be able to kind of put those other projects on the calendar as we see them coming to fruition and then kind of figure out what it might look like. I do expect there to be more things on that list, we just quite, aren't quite sure which month they're going to fall in yet, but we also, I think we foresee that we might be able to give you a month or two off this year as well.
Thank you. We have completed all scheduled agenda items, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Now that the meeting is adjourned at 7:55, thank you.